Good morning, everyone. I am Senator Roxanne Persaud, Chair of the Senate Standing Committee on Social Services and a proud representative of the 19th Senate District that covers the neighborhoods parts of Brooklyn and Queens. My committee responsibilities are certainly not limited to my district, which has a number of neighborhoods experiencing deep levels of poverty. We know that poverty and diminished economic opportunity are very much statewide issues, hence we're here today. The purpose of today's hearing is to receive testimony from recipients of federal community services block grants, better commonly known as CSBG, funding, which is distributed to New York State Department of State, which then pursuant to plan allocates funds to qualified eligible entities serving in each county of our state. Many eligible entities are community action agencies or Commission on Economic Opportunity that serve defined communities or regions of the state. In the case of New York City, CSBG funding goes to the Department of Youth and Community Development, DYCD. These entities covering all of New York State utilize CSBG funds for locally tailored anti-poverty programs. New York State's allocation is approximately 66.5 million out of nearly 755 million nationally. Under the Federal Community Services Block Grant Act, Section 676(a)(3), New York State is required to hold at least one legislative hearing every three years in conjunction with the development of the state's plan, which the Department of State submits to the federal administration on children and families on a biannual basis, most recently in 2023. With the testimony received at or submitted in response to today's hearing, New York State Department of State will have feedback to work with as they develop their 2025-2026 plan. This morning, we'll hear testimony from New York City DYCD and from additional witnesses invited by Assemblymember Davila. The legislature has also received written testimony from Fullmont Community Action Center, Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency Incorporated, Community Action of Orleans and Genesee. I personally have several years of experience with the Community Services Block Grant Program. Prior to representing my community in the legislature, I served as a member and president of Neighborhood Advisory Board 18 for the New York City Department of Youth and Community Development. In developing their annual plans, the Commissioner and DYCD's community development staff work very closely with neighborhood advisory boards across the city to ensure nimble delivery of CSBG programs based on high district level needs. I distinctly remember various parts of this important planning, which sometimes was torturous. Thank you all for being here. I'll now turn it over to Assemblymember Davila to give her opening statement before I introduce my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Persaud. Good morning, everyone. I am Assemblymember Maritza Davila, representing the 53rd Assembly District. I am pleased to join you all as the Chair of the Assembly Standing Committee on Social Services. It is an absolute honor to sit before you and to receive your firsthand testimonies about Community Services Block Grant Program. The Community Services Block Grant Program is a federal program to aid state and local communities in reducing poverty and empowering low-income households to become self-sufficient. Community action agencies serve all 62 counties, including New York City. And I am very grateful for the very important work that you all do to help our fellow New Yorker. The Office of New York State Comptroller released a report in May of this year examining child poverty throughout the state. Many of you may already be familiar with these statistics. The comptroller's report found that over 2.7 million New Yorkers experienced poverty in 2022, with more than 25% or 735,742 being children under the age of 18 years old. As poverty continues to increase in New York State, it is more important than ever that we help to provide the state's most vulnerable residents with the skills necessary to obtain I'm sorry, low-term, long-term, and meaningful employment that offers the opportunity for career advancement, adequate income, which is the true path towards financial independence and serving greater opportunities for the future generations. I'd like to close by saying that the Assembly is committed to working very hard to assist the state's most vulnerable residents in attending self-sufficiency. While we have made great strides to improve the conditions of the population and to advance initiatives that support their path to independence, we know there is still a lot to be done. I look forward to working with you all to make that happen. Thank you very, very much. And next, I would like to introduce my friend, my colleague, Assemblyman Jean McDonald. He is the Chair of Government Operations.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. As a former mayor but also as a legislator, we know how critical the Community Services Block Grant Program is to our communities. An opportunity to empower individuals, but same token, an opportunity to hear from you, those who are on the ground administering the program, to see what we can do to improve the program, to see to make sure that fairness and equity is being distributed throughout the program. So I look forward to all the comments today. Thank you.
I'd now like to introduce Senator Neil Reslin, who is also retiring from the Senate.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I salute you for all the work you've done on this committee. And as someone who's been in private practice for many, many, many years, I'm much aware of the federal block grants. And it's a horse race when we hear those statistics on people who are living in poverty. We have some catching up to do, and block grants are an instrumental part in that. So I look forward to the testimony today, but I look forward to other ways to increase our ability to attack homelessness and attack poverty, and particularly children's poverty. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. And next, I would like to introduce my counterpart on the other side of the aisle, Assemblyman Brian Marr. He is the Chair of Social Services.
I would love to be Chair of Social Services.
Oh. I mean, I'm sorry.
I'm the ranker. I'm the ranker. My good friend is the Chair of Social Services, and we enjoy working together very much.
Yeah.
As a former mayor and a town supervisor, I worked on the Community Development Block Grant in Orange County, where a majority of my district is based out of. We understand the value of these block grants and the importance of doing what we're doing here today, which is listening to the folks that are boots-on-the-ground administering these programs. So I'm looking forward to the education and working with my colleagues to better the system as much as we can.
Thank you, Assemblymember. I'd now like to call on the DYCD team, Assistant Commissioner of External Relations, Andrew Miller and his team.
Well, good morning. Thank you so much, Senator. It's always a pleasure seeing you. The New York City Department of Youth and DYCD Commissioner wants to thank you for the opportunity to comment on the New York State Department of State's Community Services Block Grant, CSBG, and to share with you some highlights of New York City's CSBG-funded initiatives. CSBG-funded programs played a critical role in the city's efforts to help communities hit hardest by the pandemic and will help us through the recovery. I'm Andrew Miller, DYCD's Assistant Commissioner for External Relations. My responsibilities include oversight of the Community Action Board and the 41 Neighborhood Advisory Boards. I'm pleased to be joined with my borough managers, Elizabeth and Tamari Wave. And I'm also pleased to be joined by my colleague Judith Sam, the Senior Director of Community Action, who really oversees many of our programs.
Good morning.
So DYCD has reviewed the Department of State's management plan and is pleased to see that the state continues to administer CSBG funding in a manner that allows for creative programming to serve low-income communities throughout the city. We support the state's targeting of funding to low-income individuals and communities most in need. CSBG funding assists participants as they overcome barriers and achieve self-sufficiency, helps them secure and retain meaningful employment, and supports adequate educational opportunities, particularly by improving literacy skills. DYCD thanks the Department of State for its continued support and administration of the CSBG program in New York State and looks forward to continuing our partnership. We appreciate the leadership of Secretary Mosley, Deputy Secretary De La Castillo, Manny Rosa, Luanne Hart, and all the rest of the members of their teams that make themselves available always to provide technical assistance or clarifications whenever needed. On a regular basis, Department of State staff collaborate with DYCD staff during visits to funded programs where they provide invaluable guidance, input, and feedback. This collaborative effort enhances the quality of service deliveries across our programs. The Department of State, demonstrating our deep understanding of the communities and populations served by our CSBG-funded programs, grants DYCD the necessary latitude and flexibility to guide our delegate agencies on implementation of policies and service delivery modalities. A key example of this flexibility is in their support of DYCD's efforts to pilot a new and innovative fatherhood initiative focused on incarcerated fathers. With their support, DYCD has been able to work collaboratively with the New York City Department of Correction and to launch a pilot program on a trial basis before broader adoption. This approach ensures that programs are tailored to the specific needs of the community and have the potential for expansions once proven successful. Additionally, Department of State has been a strong partner and collaborator when it comes to promoting CSBG programs and best practices. They again partnered with our organization for our third annual Affirming Fatherhood Conference, held this past June. Manny Rosa of the Department of State Division of Community Services served as our guest speaker, offering invaluable insights on fatherhood issues and emphasizing the positive impact of programs like ours in the community. He and Amy Kohler, also of the Department of State, offered support as we planned and held the 60th anniversary of the Community Action, held in cooperation with the New York City Mayor's of International Affairs this past August at the United Nations. This full-day symposium enabled DYCD to showcase many of our programs. We are pleased to be we were pleased to be joined by Senator Persaud at this event, who spoke about her work in the legislature on behalf of low-income families. Although DYCD is not a current recipient of the Department of State's discretionary funding, we applaud their determination to use the discretionary funding to support community action agencies in their current efforts to provide responsible fatherhood programming. Such funding is poised to allow the network to expand its focus on responsible fatherhood across the state. DYCD looks forward to continuing the conversation that has been established among DOS, OCFS, and other invested responsible fatherhood stakeholders concerning this important issue. We additionally applaud the Department of State's efforts to target social equity for support like DYCD, like other New York City agencies that deliver human services, and has been tasked with ensuring fairness and equitable access to services, resources, and opportunities so that New Yorkers can reach their full potential. We are working to ensure that equity is integral consideration in policymaking, programs, and initiatives. Here, too, DYCD looks forward to continuing the conversation underway to advances important issues. DYCD appreciates the oversight protocols put in place by the Department of State that require their annual self-assessment. DYCD is proud of the findings from their triennial review for accountability and compliance with standards and its annual compliance review of organizational standards. DYCD strives to demonstrate meeting our national organizational standards to which public CAAs aren't held. DYCD supports the state's plan to continue contracting with the New York State Community Action Association to provide technical support. The New York State Department of State and NISC continue to work together to facilitate regional meetings throughout the year that have been helpful to DYCD and other CAAs in raising awareness of opportunities for collaboration and coordination with state government and other localities. DYCD has hosted these regional meetings in prior years and looks forward to continuing this partnership. DOS's contract with NISC remains vital as community action agencies continue to refine their reporting and compliance practices in accordance with results-oriented management and accountability practices. DYCD continues to prioritize the value of Roma, train the trainer, and Roma implementing trainings as we carry out our work. DYCD looks forward to continuing to participate in this alliance. This continued association has supported our agency as we stay aligned with Roma management and accountability practices, consistent with our agency's Theory of a Change, a document that is foundational to the rationale behind funding and programmatic decisions made by DYCD. We have also looked at NISC's ways to include the use of trauma-informed lens and in our oversight of our programmatic portfolio. So DYCD's use of CSBG funding, since 1996, DYCD has served as the community action agency for the city, receiving federal CSBG funds through the Department of State and responsible for distributing funding for programs on the local level in accordance with the goals of the federal CSBG statute. DYCD's mission is to invest in a network of community-based organizations and programs to alleviate the effects of poverty and to provide opportunities for New Yorkers and communities to flourish. CSBG funds enable DYCD to provide services for the most vulnerable New Yorkers. Through these funds, DYCD aims to reduce poverty, empower people to achieve self-sufficiency in targeted low-income communities throughout the city's five boroughs. We are pleased that the state plan emphasizes these values. Residents in target communities participate in recommending the funding allocations and priorities for CSBG-funded programs in the neighborhoods at public hearings and through the Neighborhood Advisory Boards that the Senator mentioned earlier. DYCD contracts with nonprofit organizations according to the city's fiscal year, which begins July 1st. During city fiscal year '24, which ended on June 30th, DYCD received approximately $34.5 million in CSBG funding, partnered with 254 community-based organizations, including institutions of post-secondary education and training and faith-based organizations that serve as our CBO delegate agencies. We've partnered with two faith-based organizations, two for-profit home businesses, two health service institutions, and 12 local elected government officials who serve on our Community Action Board. And we've served over 13,000 individuals. In calendar year 2022, DYCD completed its last citywide community needs assessment to learn about the highest priority needs in local communities. More than 299 New Yorkers with low incomes participated directly in either DYCD's Community Action Board, one of our 41 Neighborhood Advisory Boards, to provide input into local decision-making and policy setting, donating over 1,584 hours to community action. My written detail includes more information about DYCD's programs, but in the interest of time, I'm going to just highlight a few. So we have literacy services. We also have adolescent literacy programs. We have we fund English for speakers over the languages classes, immigrant services, comprehensive services for immigrant families, the Family Development Credentialing Program, and the Fatherhood Initiative, which I mentioned earlier. And then you'll also know we have the Neighborhood Development Areas Initiative, which fosters the local level engagement. This year, New York City used about $15.47 million to contract with approximately 56 organizations that provide services to residents of targeted low-income communities, such as educational support for high school youth, adult literacy, senior services, immigrants' support services, healthy families, safety awareness and crime prevention, immigrant services for application assistance, immigrant services for ESOL and civics, and economic development. In conclusion, we just want to share you two stories about two successful program participants. There is a 46-year-old mother from the Dominican Republic, resides in a modest apartment in the Bronx with her three teenage children. Since moving to the United States in 2018, she has worked tirelessly as a home attendant to support her family. Back in the Dominican Republic, she studied computer engineering, but her dreams of further education were sidelined by family obligations and the loss of her husband. In 2022, she enrolled in an ESOL program, embarking on a journey to improve her English proficiency. She has participated in our ESOL program for more than a year, and due to her dedication and hard work, she has improved her language skills and has become and because of this program, she has been able to pass her citizen exam and become a U.S. citizen in 2023. She now is in college to study social work, driven by her desire to make a meaningful impact in her community. We also want to highlight a 53-year-old African-American father who entered the fatherhood program in 2023, despite the challenges. I lost my page.
There you go.
Sorry about that. Despite the challenges he faces personally and with his children, he came in with a positive attitude. He has a disability from losing an arm in an accident a few years ago. His three children currently live with family members of their mother. The family wants nothing to do with him because of his incarceration and did not allow him to have any contact with his children. He decided to fight this battle by enrolling in the fatherhood program. His passion for his children was evident, and staff members also noted his strong desire to help the other members of the group by sharing personal lessons learned from his good and bad decisions. He shared information on parenting from the successes and failures of his parents. He was willing to listen to others and staff members. As a result, he went to court in 2024, and the judge was so impressed with his efforts and dedication to his children, she granted him supervised visits with his children after completing the fatherhood programs, employment services workshops. He shared with his counsel that he's excited that he'll be seeing his children soon and is thankful for the program and the support he received. He stands out because, in the face of personal and outside obstacles, he kept a positive outlook and followed the steps to success and was rewarded. These stories are aligned with DYCD's vision, which is to improve the quality of life of New Yorkers by collaborating with local organizations and investing in the talents and assets of our communities to help them develop, grow, and thrive. They also align with the priorities of Mayor Eric Adams to build a more equitable city for all New Yorkers. On behalf of Commissioner Howard, I thank you for the opportunity to share DYCD's efforts to serve New York's low-income communities, families, and communities.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Before we go to questions I'm going to ask, Assemblymember Marr to introduce his member who came in.
Yes, so joining me on our minority portion of the Social Services Committee in the State Assembly is Assemblymember Lester Chang. Lester, would you like to introduce yourself?
I got it. Well, thank you very much. I'm Lester Chang, representing Southern Brooklyn. That's Dykes Heights, Bensonhurst, Sunset Park, and a little bit of Borough Park, southern part itself.
I was born in your district, so.
I grew up pretty much almost 50 years in Midwood. Graduated from there and Brooklyn College, too. Thank you.
Great.
Can you hear me? Okay, good. So Commissioner, I'd like to ask you a few questions. What do you think are the greatest challenges that youth in New York City are facing that can be alleviated by the CSBG funding?
You know, one of the things that we've actually spoke to, we had many, many town halls with young people, and the number one issue is mental health. And I think we have to focus more on embedding mental health across all program areas that we have. And actually, Commissioner Howard is dedicated to that, and we're you're going to continue to see a strong emphasis of mental health in all of our RFPs moving forward.
Okay. Can you give an idea of how you're going to embed it in the programs? Say, for example, your after-school programs, how would you have trained staff there?
It could run the gamut. Like, we're actually currently working on a concept paper that we'll be releasing hopefully soon, that you'll see various ways that we want our community-based organization connecting with mental health providers in their communities.
Okay, thank you. So also, as we're sticking with youth, on your the NABs and the CABs, how many youth are part of those boards? Are they part of the board? Or do they have any kind of powers to make suggestions on those boards?
That's a great question, Senator. We actually emphasize when we're recruiting for members of the Neighborhood Advisory Boards that anyone 16 and above are eligible, and so we do a lot of outreach. I would look forward to working with you and your colleagues, who actually have Neighborhood Advisory Boards in their district, to urge your colleagues to also fill those seats with 16-year-olds, because they're really important. And we also have been focusing on another board we have is the Youth Board. Commissioner Howard has been placing more young people on that board as well, because youth voice is very important.
Yes, it is. We too often take their voices for granted, and they let us know, you know, when we were doing that. Why mask it? Because, you know, the NAB that I was part of is no longer. I think that the federal government felt that there was no need to fund programs there because they thought the people made too much money, which was not so. If you can tell us, DYCD is mostly associated with programs and services for youth. We know that. What are some of the adult programs that you're offering, particularly the ones funded by CSBG?
I'm going to let my colleague Judith tackle some of that.
Yeah, so, hello, Kim. So some of the adult programs consist of some of our It's not on. Okay, push. How about that? Okay, good. So some of our youth programs consist of our Fatherhood Initiative, our Economic Development Initiative. It's, you know, youth and adults, anyone who wants to be an entrepreneur or has a current small business and is looking to expand it. Our Healthy Families Program is for the whole entire family, so the mother, the father, and the children, whoever makes up the family. We have our adult literacy programs, our immigrant services programs. Those are all focused around adult population.
Are they I know in some places there, for example, well, DYCD would not do these weatherization trainings and all of those kinds of things. What kinds of trainings do you have for adults that are funded by the grants?
In terms of training, our Economic Development Program has a wide range of training. You know, we do technical skills. The providers provide technical skills, soft skills, not only just to help them with probably establishing a business or expanding a business, but just, you know, any level of employment so that training is embedded in the program. The Healthy Families Program is not so much trainers but workshops. The Healthy Families Program is not so much trainers, but workshops on how to become self-sufficient. Our senior programs as well provide workshops to our older population on how to, you know, be self-sufficient as well. So those are the extent of the programs and the trainings, rather.
Are you partnered with any workforce development groups?
Well, we have workforce within D Y C D, but yeah, yeah, we do partner. Our Economic Development Program, we actually partner with small business services. We're planning on collaborating with them to help bring resources as it relates to employment, economic development into our programs.
For your small businesses, do you interact at all with any of the chambers of commerce?
Our Economic Development Program, the New York Women Chambers of Commerce, they actually have one of our largest contracts as it pertains to economic development, and they service individuals in both the Bronx and Manhattan.
Only?
Currently.
Okay, just have to make sure. What do you think, what are the improvements to C S B G, if any, would you recommend to the New York State Department of State or to children and families?
Improvements to the program? We'd love more.
Give me a suggestion.
Yeah, like more funding, but again, we're so pleased with the flexibility and the work that we do with the Department of State. They give us full flexibility pursuant to, of course, C S B G regulations.
Regulations.
Yeah.
Definitely more. We would love to expand the work that we're doing throughout the five boroughs.
Well, thank you both. I am now going to turn it over to Assemblymember Davila.
Thank you for your testimony. I have a couple of questions. So the C S B G funds awarded to grantees to all counties in New York State, how does poverty present itself across various demographics? How can you decide where these funds are going to go based on the needs of?
Yes, so we do, we do look at census data and economic data in terms of when we draw the lines. And we do that quite frequently, like every several years, we look at when we redistrict, based upon, again, the federal factors of poverty.
Yes.
And we use the neighborhood tabulation areas, and they form the, they form the board areas, which kind of like try to follow the lines of the community boards. So we have forty-one now.
Okay, thank you. I also kind of read some stuff on the large influx of immigrants that we all have seen played out throughout the entire, for the past two or three years. And as you stated in your testimony, there is a greater need for the immigrant population, one, to stabilize, right? They have to learn English, they have to be able to get trained for jobs, get a G E D, all of these things that are extremely important in order to be successful in New York State, because it is the most expensive state in the world, right? But what I am experiencing in my district is that I have a couple of agencies, particularly one, that is being threatened to take away some of their funding because, quote-unquote, "the community has changed." In other words, I've lived there my entire life, and in the early nineties, it was predominantly Latino completely. Now, we are, we have a community of moderate income families and individuals. So therefore, I think that they start seeing these needs decrease as the community revenue starts going up, right? However, the immigrant, immigration, the immigration population is heavy in my district. Furthermore, there are still parents that are working two and three jobs in order to make ends meet. In my district, a flat, which means a railroad apartment, costs three thousand dollars a month, two-bedroom, right? So, you know, when we start threatening all of these programs in certain communities because we think we know the numbers, and you don't take into account the amount of immigrants that are living in that community and people that do work and want to progress. I'll give you an example. I'm bringing in a CUNY program into my district so that families of older adults can go to college. Actually, it's Kingsboro Community College, right, offsite, because it's easier for them to be able to graduate. But my concern is that I know you have to balance your books, but I would urge you to take a look at these, second look at these communities where this money is being allocated and take extra consideration to what's being added right now. And that is the immigration population, which we're trying to help. We, none of us want to live in communities with tent cities, so that's one thing. What new initiatives has the Community Services Block grant funded?
What new initiatives, yes?
So Andrew mentioned earlier that we piloted the Fatherhood Initiative with Department of Corrections inside of Rikers. So it was a twelve-week pilot where our C B O partnered with the corrections facility to facilitate workshops to the fathers, as well as they did a big end-of-year graduation ceremony. We're looking to pilot that again this year, and we're hoping to do two cohorts this year. So that's one new initiative that we implemented this past program year.
And I understand is we need to do more. I'm sure it's a huge undertaking right now to be able to service a lot of communities. But I really am, I am interested in seeing more programs, be able to be out in the community, explaining to people that these are the services that you provide, and I don't see a lot of that in my district, so.
Assemblymember, we would love to come out to your district. We would love to show you all the programs that are in your district as well. You know, I don't have to tell you, we had a very successful summer this year. Over a hundred thousand kids served by the Summer Youth Employment Program, a hundred and ten thousand kids in the Summer Rising Program, and the Office of Neighborhood Safety, which was transferred over to D Y C D last year, did a lot of work on the grounds to keep this a safe summer for young people.
Thank you. That's it. I have no further questions.
Okay, Senator President?
I'd like you to comment in general. We talked about the people served. Your needs would require us to look at how many aren't being served and additional dollars, how would that cure it? And how much would we need? Very general question.
That's a great question, Senator, that I'd love to discuss with Senator Prasad about looking at our federal partners, because federal money is just a very, D Y C D's budget is about one point four billion dollars, and most of it is city tax levy funding, and we get some from the state and we appreciate that. But we'd love to do much, much more with more federal support. For example, S Y E P used to be a standalone federal program, and now it's mostly funded by the City of New York and the tantamount of dollars that we're grateful we get from the state legislature.
So we need a lot more from three different sources.
We'd love more state and federal support.
So thank you for your testimony, and you smartly recognized the great work that D O S does, because one of my concerns, Senator Prasad asked, is what else can we do at the state level? And it seems as if it's doing well. It's run by a former Assemblymember now, as we know, so we know it's in good hands.
He's also in the same building as us.
There you go.
Yes, so we go right upstairs.
That's being connected, there's no doubt.
Manny, we love Manny.
Smart answer to just basically say we need more, I get that. So I'm gonna just ask you something completely different, because I'm not down in the city, I'm an upstate member. But been around C B, this program for a while. What is your favorite program? Not to, not to play favorites, but there's always got to be a program where you say, you know, I never really thought this was going to work, and this is working out just well.
I mean, that's really a personal question, but I guess we could both share.
Yeah, I'd like to hear both your perspectives.
Mine is the Fatherhood Program. Connecting non-custodial dads with their children is wonderful. In fact, we're doing on Staten Island on Thursday, Dads Take Your Children to School Day. And I plan on being there with your colleague, Assemblymember Charles Paul.
Beautiful.
Oh, that's a tough one. I would say our high school youth program. I started my career in youth development, so I am a youth development practitioner. So I would say the high school youth program. We focus on high school students who are currently struggling academically and with attendance. We try to bring them in, provide them tutoring, provide them college and career curriculum programming to hopefully get them to, you know, graduate high school, either go to trade school or college afterwards. So I would say the high school youth. And second would be the Fatherhood Initiative.
Thank you.
But we love all our children, though.
That's very good, and you know, thank you for your work. It's, there's always a lot of entities looking to participate in the program, and you have to weigh the balance of what's going to benefit individuals and also how effective these organizations are going to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblymember Mar.
Assemblymember Mar?
Thank you very much. Excellent programs and really appreciate your thoroughness in the responses. My colleague touched on it a little bit, and I just wanted to get your perspective on the growing number of immigrants coming into the country over the next, last several years, the migrant crisis as a whole. It looks like you've given really good numbers. I assume they're annual numbers based on this fiscal year, or was that total in terms of the program?
Generally, the numbers are in fiscal years.
Okay. Have you seen the number of individuals that you, in need of servicing, increase over these last several years? And would you say the funding at the federal level has been enough to really take on an increased role?
Well, I'm gonna echo what Mayor Adams has. He always is calling on the federal government to do much more, because this has costed, overall, it cost the city about four billion dollars, of which we saw very little federal support.
Would you say in the total number of individuals you serve that has increased over the last several years?
I would say they stay about equal, but we do see needs across our program areas.
Yes, specifically, I see here, there's, I think, three different areas that help for immigrant families and immigrant services. So I would say specifically to those programs, have you been stretched thin, or has it been kind of just the same number of individuals you've served?
So the number's been predominantly the same because it's based on the funding, right? So we only have a certain capacity in order to serve. So if we get funded for, let's say, a thousand slots, that means we can only serve up to a thousand individuals.
So that's my next question. When it comes to scaling and when it comes to available funding, have you had an issue with funding you've received and not being able to contract or not being able to have the labor that's there? So let's say we were to have a windfall of some sort and there was more funding, is the workforce there to provide the services, and is that another issue in and of itself?
Can you repeat that again? I don't think I.
Sure. So basically, the question is, if you were to receive more funding, is there an infrastructure that exists to provide the services, or is that another issue in and of itself?
Well, I could say our providers are very nimble.
Right, right.
Like, we've expanded programs on a dime, and our providers have really stepped up to the plate.
Okay, and that's a mix, right? That's individuals that are post-secondary education, there's faith-based organizations. So what you're saying is if the funding came, if there was more federal support or state support, that your partners would be able to provide additional services for more people?
Yes, I'll give you a great example. Just a few short years ago, the Summer Youth Employment Program only served thirty-five thousand kids. We're now up to a hundred thousand, and that's because of the work of our great workforce providers.
Excellent. Well, thank you for that. That was a big question that I had. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Assemblymember.
Assemblymember Chang?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you, Ms. Sam, for being here. Very pleasant day in Albany, at least it's not raining. I do benefit from Summer Youth S Y E B program because I last for two summers. This past summer, I employed over thirty students, and the year before that, almost fifteen, as I'm beginning to understand that. And I lucky I rolled, and I don't know how we can expand that more into the fall program as well. I know there's a very limited amount of slots for the fall.
For the Work, Learn, and Grow program, which is our growth, yes.
That's correct, so I'm not sure.
I think there's about seven thousand slots for that.
Yeah, it's very, very small and lottery intense, but I did benefit from it, and it's a learning experience for me and how to employ these senior high schools plus some colleges as well. And not just only that, but one of them just turned to be my part-time, and he's sitting over there.
Oh.
Right over here, just happened to be one of them, yes, that's correct.
That's a great story.
It's a great success itself. So I hope to continue to expand that, either by ours or by number of kids for opportunity as well. And the problem also I've seen, you employed that much, a hundred-plus-thousand, many agencies. I mean, I can only take no more than thirty. I wish I could take more, but I really can't. And there is, there's issues about there is displaced students, because there's not enough spots for them to. So that's the problem. You expand it so fast, but recipient like me unable to absorb all that. So that's something you have to balance out and get the word out.
Well, Assemblymember, I appreciate that. We're very proud of our work with members of the state legislature, as well as the city council, on giving young people job opportunities. We're also very proud, we had one thousand young people employed this summer by the N Y P D, and many, many, many other agencies stepped up to the plate and also took on thousands of young people. So we're proud of that work.
Another question is education side, especially adult not getting a G E D. How can we expand, aren't we expanding as, I mean, this program's been around for a long time, trying to get young adults, trying to get the G E D or the high school equivalency, or it's a new name right now. So what kind of program have we able to crack that, crack that open and get as many students as possible? Because without education, it's very limited opportunity. I mean, going to college, you need, it's increased our opportunity, but all of us have college degree, and you know how that is. Opportunity expands when you have a college, not just only a high school. What have we able to, to more successful and get these kids to stay in school?
Right. So our adult literacy program, it's actually a small program, but that supports both H S C and G E D programming. Currently, the funding for that is about seven hundred and thirty thousand. So we're currently located in some beacon programs, some community centers, and some schools. We would love to be able to expand that in order to be able to provide more support to adults who are looking for high school equivalency programs.
Because how can you, I mean, the Department of Education in New York City have their program itself. So how much do you give money or you participate with them in partnership, or is it separate program from your block grant? What Department of Education is doing?
Right, so our funding is separate from the Department of Education. We may collaborate with them in terms of some sort of referrals or maybe expanding on what they're currently doing, but the funding streams are two separate funding streams.
And then we also have CUNY, we also have the library systems that do much of this important work as well.
Would you expand the age for getting high school G E D without, you know, beyond twenty-one or twenty-six years old? Can you expand that to a certain age?
Yes, we definitely can. I don't think there's a cap on the age limit for any of our H S C programs.
Okay, probably talk to you on the sideline how we can improve on that, because education is one of the keys to. is one of the keys to opportunities. And next one is about taking your father to school. I think today is the day to take the, I read something about that, I said, yeah, schedule conflict, I would've gone to my daughter's school. But also, fatherhood is important. I raised it as a single-parent environment. My father passed away when I was eight years old. So, it's, without the male role model, fortunately, I had uncles to help out my family to fill in the male role model. So, I can imagine many families without a male role model have to struggle to get that, to get the balance in, because two parents is far better raising a child than a single parent, no matter how you cut the math, is two parents is the best. Share the resources, share the hours, share the work, and everything. So, how can we improve the fatherhood in our society here? Is it, is it education? Is it cultural changes? Is it how to increase that opportunity to have fatherhood entered in a child's development? That's critical.
Right, it's definitely more education, it's definitely more mental health support, support with employment. I think all the different barriers that fathers are facing impacts their role in their child's life. It's also building relationships with the other parent, like, and what we do well in our fatherhood initiatives, if we offer co-parenting classes. So, we try our best to bring both parents together and provide workshops for them to be able to, you know, learn how to work together, to be able to support their young ones.
And Assembly Member, we would love to invite you to some of our programs so you can see the work in action.
You know, I grew up, I feel it when I see it, because I grew up in that environment, because I grew up in a single-parent environment, a single mother. So, but I know it's really important to have that father role, and we can't push guys to be the father, even though they are a father, and they don't want to be that role. We can't force them to do that. But there has to be some sort of encouragement, some sort of incentive, that there is, should be in a role, their responsibility to help out, if possible, and make it a success. But that's a, that's a long-term challenge. Okay? Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Assembly Member.
Thank you. You know, I just wanted, Assembly Member talked about the fatherhood initiative program. I have gone to a number of them at various schools in my district, and I want to commend you and your team for what you do, bringing the fathers together. It makes a difference in the lives of the children, and you just see the child, the light that comes over them when the dad walks in, you know, bringing them to school on that day, even though it's just one day, and all of the activities that surround that day. So, I just want to commend you for that program, and I hope across the state that that program can be replicated in the same way. And so, I just, again, I want to thank you for that. And also, we want to talk, just quickly, I want to say about the problems that we're trying to push, to ensure that you can have an all-round, a year-round youth employment. You know, we've been talking about it, and we've, talking about it, and talking about it. There are many youths who wish that they can work, but summer youth employment is limited. The number of slots are limited, and after summer is over, that's it. So, we're looking to ensure that we can create a year-round, fully-funded employment program so youth across the state can apply for a job and have that job. I think it would alleviate a lot, a number of the issues that we encounter when we say that our youth is idle. So, again, I just want to thank you all for coming here today, and we are committed to continuing to work with your agency to ensure that, you know, the youth across New York City in particular, but across the state are receiving the services that they should. So, thank you again for coming today.
And it's been a pleasure to appear before you, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Have a great day.
The next speaker, Joanna Fuentes. Joanna Fuentes is a community organizer, and she just wanted to share her concerns in terms of the disabled community, and offers some very distinct, I guess, information for us, so.
Yeah.
Joanna, you're on.
Come on. Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for hiring me. My name is Joanna from Community Dialogue, Joanna Singh, married, from Community Dialogue N Y C. It is an honor to be here today. And I would like to share a little story really quick before I start. I was raised from a single mom. My mom had ten children. My father died of overdose, and he had MICA, which is mental illness. He had schizophrenia. Unfortunately, there was not much that could be done in those times. And the reason why I started Community Dialogue N Y C is because I wanted someone that could do something for someone else. So, I also have a child who has developmental delays, he's autistic, and a grandson. So, and with that, I want to share my concerns with you all, and please bear with me, I'm also dyslexic. So, I'm pretty proud to be able to be doing this today, so, thank you. Our animal members, the lack of supportive housing for individuals with disability is not just an oversight. It is a looming crisis which serves consequence, consequence for both these vulnerable individuals in the community in which they live. As it stands, the current shelter and foster care system are utterly unfit to provide the specialized care and stability that people with disability need. Without proper action, the ripple effects of this neglect will continue to worsen, leading to deeper homelessness, higher rates of incarceration, increased hospitalizations, and community destabilization. Supportive housing provides individuals with disability not only a roof over their head, but the access to vital mental health, medical, and social services that they require to live independently and safely. Without these housings, we are facing, forcing individuals into shelters that are ill-equipped to handle their needs, or worse, into the streets where they are vulnerable to abuse, exploitation, and violence. For individuals with disability, delay, or cognitive disabilities, we may not even recognize, they may not be even recognized when they are in danger. The risks are incomprehensible. Already, we are witnessing tragic stories of individuals being abused, lost in a system simply because there was no supportive housing available. Without substantial investment in supportive housing, our communities will pay the price. First foremost, the human toll in catastrophe, shelters are being overwhelmed with individuals who need long-term care, leading to breakdowns in a very, in a very system designed to provide short-term emergency assistance. As shelters struggle to keep up, the gap in care grows wider, leaving individuals desperate situations without a lifeline. These with mental health challenges and individuals with disability are at greater risk of becoming chronically homeless, trapped in a circle of instability that perpetuates further physical and psychological harm. Beyond the human cost, the financial toll of communities is staggering. Homelessness leads to increased use of emergency services, hospitalizations, and law enforcement intervention. For every individual kept in shelters or on the streets, the community shoulders higher healthcare and incarceration costs. On the other hand, supportive housing has been proven time again to reduce these burdens, offering not just stability for housing for individuals with disability, but saving for the community. Research shows that supportive housing dramatically reduces emergency room visits, hospital stays, and interaction with the justice system. In some studies, supportive housing reduces medical costs for participants by forty-five percent and decrease the needs for emergency services, saving thousands of dollars per person annually. This is not just an economic issue. It is an urgent moral imperative. If we fail to invest in supportive housing, we are condemning countless individuals with disability to live, disability, lives of suffering and instability. And doing so, we disableize our own communities. Without necessary housing infrastructure, we will see the problem of mental illness, homelessness, and disability spiral further out of control. Shelters will remain overcrowded, hospitals will bear the brunt of repeat emergency care, and public safety will cause, continue to suffer as vulnerable people are forced into dangerous situations. The need for supportive housing is not just a choice. It is a requirement for the well-being of our community and our nation. It is time for a fundamental shift in how we address housing for individuals with disability. This is not a temporary fix. This is a call for sustainable change that must be addressed through federal investments and comprehensive policy reform. By expanding supportive housing, we offer people with disability the dignity of a stable home, access to crucial services, and the opportunity to live independent, fulfilled lives. In doing so, we strengthen the fabric of our community, reduce the strain of our public resource, and demonstrate our commitment to our more equitable and compassionate society. We cannot wait any longer. If we fail to act now, the consequence will only worsen. The time for change is now, and this change begins prioritizing supportive housing for individuals with disability. I urge you to lead this change and assure that America upholds its duty to care for the most vulnerable amongst us. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your commentary. We all, as a social services chairs, we understand the plight of those, the disabled community, and the plight of homelessness, and we are continuing to fight to ensure that there are more supportive living units available so that people who are in need of wraparound services will be able to do so in the spaces in which they live. So, again, thank you for bringing this to our attention today.
Yeah, and our community, what we do is quiet two walks where we see homeless individuals, and when they have disability, unfortunately, we have to put them in a shelter that they shouldn't be. And unfortunately, they suffer. So, this is where my cry comes from. So, maybe we could do better.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna, for sharing your story. I've seen you in action, and this is a young lady that's selfless and has done this practically on her own, because her own experience has led her there with her own children. And why I think it was important for her to come up and share her story is because we've been dealing with a couple of stories that are, you know, we can't talk about right now. But, you know, disabled young children don't grow out of disability. Someone that is born with autism will stay autistic their whole life, and that is the most underserved population that I've seen. And thanks to Joanna, I've been able to kind of open up my eyes a little bit, and I will reassure you that my colleagues here on both sides of the aisle, we are fighting relentlessly to ensure not only that the Y C D has what they need to be able to bring all these wonderful programs to our communities. We are fighting relentlessly to ensure that housing is first and foremost, one of our first, you know, initiatives in Albany. It's not easy. It is not easy. That is not a fight that you win overnight, but nevertheless, keep chipping at that wall, and I will be by your side to do that. So, thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Assembly Member Moore?
I could leave.
Thank you. Just one quick question.
Sure.
Do you and/or any of the advocates that you work with have the ability to quantify just how many folks are in, need this type of specific assistance?
Wow, so far, I did a research in general. There must have been like six hundred and fifty-three thousand.
And is that specific?
And the year of January twenty, twenty twenty-three, who were actually homeless for one day.
And that's specific to New York City?
Yeah.
Wow, thank you for that.
Thank you. Yeah. It was alarming.
Assembly Member Chang?
Thank you very much, and thank you for your powerful and emotional testimony. I know you feel from your heart. Would also, there are available housing in other parts of the states, and have you perhaps thinking about certain people may be willing to relocate certain parts of the area that has available housing in the states, even though outside of New York City itself? Because New York City is crowded, but upstate, there's plenty of available housing, even in Albany. Would that be part of the equation, if we give supportive services to people willing to move upstate? And also, how do you define supportive services, since there's a different level of disability as well? You know, some needs require twenty-four hours, some require some, so maybe perhaps we can figure out what, what kind of supportive services and use that, and maybe relocation different parts of the state? Would that mitigate some of the problems here?
What I've noticed mostly, it's more about advocacy and parenting, and some parents are not aware of the services that are available for them. And also, some of the children that we've been encountering with have been abandoned, or they've aged out of foster care. And that's what makes it very difficult. Whether they want to move, or they want to go somewhere upstate, they feel that they're gonna send them to a group home. So, they're afraid to go anywhere else. Yeah.
It's gonna be very hard to solve, you know, that kind of problem, that diverse population itself. It's very difficult, and what level of services that they require. But it's a start. You started a conversation, and in continuation with this conversation, so we'll try to figure out some sort of, I mean, I solve a hundred percent, but we'll just solve pieces of it and maybe make some lives better.
You know, I've heard Marita said this one time. She says, it's not how you start, it's how you end. I think that now that we are aware, I think that starting from early intervention, it's very important if we start targeting our school systems and working with the younger groups so that we could prevent being here again, to getting it more worse. I think if we start there with the younger groups, we're gonna be able to make a change, provide them the services they need, the programs, the early interventions. And a lot of the daycares that I've noticed are, have been rejecting the students who have disability. So, maybe we need to look into that as well.
Well, it's hard because they're not trained, and they don't want the liability to do that, so I can see their point of view as well.
Yeah, I know. It's very difficult. It's just something that, it's a very big challenge, but then that leads to postpartum depression, leads to more mental illness. So, there has to be something that we can do, where we could work, we could talk, and we could work something out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fuentes. Thanks again for coming up today.
Thank you for having me.
And thank you. We have additional information that was submitted by the other parties that we mentioned before in terms of this block grant hearing. So, again, thank you, everyone, for joining us today. And this concludes our joint public hearing, the Community Services Block Grant. Thanks, everyone.